I thought about that today when I was sending the message to the stuff at the house. I forgot to tell you to get it.
You can get away with that, huh?
I love stuff up in, I love stuff up in.
Yeah, I think we could really get away with it in seventy, not only.
There's no way, no.
I remember when I was coaching those top team at the annual, you know, time we give your awards and all that. Those girls would always come up and help you, you know, every once in a while today and you wouldn't even think about giving it to six of them.
I know it. And Pat and me used to smack them on the rear. In the comp, yeah. Not anymore.
Well, we are here for another work session. Uh, we were successful at the last meeting in adopting seven guiding principles statements. Uh, they're on the cover sheet as well, the what's that package? Does everybody have a packet or? Great, great. So today's exercise is to try and start, we wanted to try and focus on the development of a problem statement. Justin, did you have a? Nothing for wanting to get us started or idea or?
Um, well, I mean, I know that council members, Robin, Griffin provided information on the concept of the problem statement and provided, um, their thoughts on what that might look like.
Yes, I refresh my memory, why are we calling it a problem statement? Why not a goal, why not a something but a problem statement? Is that just what you do these days and I'm just not in that arena, I don't know that? But it has sort of attitude with it and that makes me nervous.
I guess I may have been, I don't know if I was the first one to bring up that phrase in particular, but the way I see it as, and I think I thought about this when we were coming up with guiding principles, in my mind, it was whatever I'm doing here at council, I like to think of, what is the problem we're trying to solve? I see it as a problem solver, so if we're taking an action, in my mind, it's because there's a problem. Is there something going to happen or is there something we're trying to fix? Okay, so in my mind, when I say problem statement, well, there must be some, if you have a goal, there must, must be some reason we're even having a conversation with the fire station, so I just want to make sure that.
Well, that's good for you, but my approach being on this council is that to kind of try to get out of a problem state and see a way that I can make things look better or be better or whatever, I'm happy to be active, but I'd rather be proactive and therefore that problem statement really strikes. So, so if there's another word I'd like to at least think about, that's calling it something else.
In the, in the world of project management, that, that has multiple names, and a problem statement is one of them and not necessarily because there is a problem.
Okay.
Um, I personally more like it, there, there is, why are we doing this is another way of putting it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that can be used in case in, in my opinion, um, I use the problem statement for this because it was floating around anyways.
Uh, well, I just, if everybody else thinks I'm very safe, then I'll.
Oh, yeah, I thought the same thing.
Uh, well, good, well, there we go, it's good that you said together.
So, I might have to say, no, we're using a negative.
Yeah.
When we're gonna use it in a positive and some different, but if that's what I care, how we saw it in the, in the other world, I can, I can adjust this.
Yeah.
It hit me right away when I, when I saw that, I went, oh, you mean a problem? Yeah, it's been a problem for years, but we don't call it, we never call it a problem.
We've been.
In black and white until today.
Together and to go out to the community with a problem, a problem statement, that makes me feel very uncomfortable.
About opportunity state.
Yeah, maybe.
It's a minor thing. Yes, I wanted to just.
Well, maybe, no, it's okay, I, I, it's, it's a fair point, actually, I think we should speak through all of that. So for now, is it, uh, is it defining an objective?
Mm-hmm.
That's okay.
That's fine, yeah.
Maybe we can just start by trying to do that.
Well, I think, yeah, so I mean, trying to guess to further clarify my thinking on it, I'm also personally trying to have an understanding of, I, I do see it as like there are deficiencies in the current station, there's, that's not a secret. That 2015 document from partners and architecture literally laid out ways in which the infrastructure of that building is insufficient, both just from an infrastructure perspective and also from a performance standard perspective and like ability of the fire station to do what they need to do. So I personally am looking for a better understanding of, and I would like, I guess, all of us to have a shared understanding of what those deficiencies are, both when it comes to specifically the design and functioning of the building and how it relates to our ability to meet the terms of the interlocal agreement, which state that that station should be the center of control and operations for the DAFD service area. I think if I can have a better understanding of, I mean, it's clear to me there are problems structurally like with the building, and that's in the 2015 Partners in Architecture report and maybe in other locations. What I, what I feel like is critical to me to understanding the path forward is, and I, my residents have asked me, well, is service, is service being negatively impacted by those structural problems with that building? And I think that's a fair question, and I think if we want to propose an action that we are able to get resident support behind, that, that we want to get the support of residents, it seems to me that's a question that's going to keep coming back, some people might keep coming to us and saying, well, yeah, fix the building or like fix the steps, make them compliant or add X, Y, and Z, but I don't think we need, you know, A, B, and C because, you know, are we not responding to fires or are we, I mean, these are things that occur from residents, so I want to, I guess, be proactive in that sense of making sure I have the information, I need to answer those questions of residents. Because I do think, and I think we all have the same goal, that whatever actually we propose, we would want to be able to, um, you know, answer those questions from residents and, and get their support where we feel like we have an action that we would like, if to the extent that we need their support for that, I would like to be able to answer those questions, so. To me, it's more than just an objective, it's, it's also what are we specifically trying to address as it relates to the nuts and bolts of the building and also how those nuts and bolts relate to the ability of our station to serve as the center of control and operations for the DAFD service area.
So I haven't remembered the phrase center of control and operations.
It's from the interlevel agreement.
Straight out of there?
Yeah, this is to be the center of operations and control of the department, it might be where they define the main station.
All right, yeah. So I'll start there then, so what does that mean to you then? What does center of control and operations mean to you?
I mean, I might have some idea, but I don't know that I'm qualified to say, I'm not the one who controls and operates the, this, the fire station, so that is something I would be interested in getting feedback from the chief and, you know, he's the chief of the DAFD, he is, I, my extent is he's the one who's managing the control and operations of that department. And so I would be looking for feedback from him and other relevant stakeholders, um, as to what, what do they need and, you know, to what extent are there limitations in the current building that are impacting the ability of that, of, of that building to be the center of control and operations? What, what is sufficient in that building that's preventing, if anything?
Right, so, so my, my, my perspective, I don't have a problem with that phrase, center of control and operations at all, I've been, I've heard, you know, say we have to have the main station. Um, but I don't, I don't think that that station has to have absolutely every function there just because of those words. Or, and we're, we're in a, we're in an area wide um, fire department where we, where we share resources with the other communities. And I think that there should be some, while the, while the, maybe the decision making, maybe the chief's office, maybe the, I'm not sure, the address for the department is specifically that or, or is, is, you know, purposely that, I don't know that every station has to duplicate certain functions, like, all the community training doesn't all have to occur at that station. But as a, as a function, I think that, that some of what we've talked about for the last, you know, eight years on this or more has been trying to get our hands around the different functions that we do occur at that facility. And, and is there, is there a way for those, some of those functions to occur? You know, in, at other stations? We, we as, we as a city of Dexter should get a benefit from being in the, in the, in an area wide, and there should ought to be some benefit to our sharing of resources across the other communities, and if they have training or homework or they have whatever it might be, I think that that needs to be part of the thought process, I think. That, the benefit for us having training facilities is that there are more bodies in the station closer to our residents, to our citizens, than if they're out six miles away in Dexter Township, more bodies close and more timely responses. There's my benefit. So.
Yeah, so I'm gonna bring us back a little bit to, to think about, if we are thinking about the statement, why are we doing this? Um, because this conversation that we just had, it goes into a little bit details of parts of it. To me, that, that statement, why are we doing this, is sort of a thirty second elevator pitch. If you're stuck in the elevator with one of the community members, one of the residents of Dexter, and somebody asks, why are you having a fire station discussion or topic as part of your agenda? What do you say in that thirty seconds to that person as why are you, are we doing this? That's the problem statement or opportunity statement or why are we doing this part? So let's think about that thirty seconds, if you're gonna give two sentences or three sentences of why are we even approaching this, of having this item on our agenda, what is that why? And then all the discussions that was just happening, it's all valid as part of the details of bringing us to the objective, which is answering that why and making a decision eventually of what approach we want to have to, to answer that why.
I'll throw up there, the current Dexter City Fire Station is functionally obsolete and was not designed or intended for fire department, the current staffing or mission or apparatus as a 2020 modern fire station department that we have. I use the term functionally obsolete very.
It wasn't designed for a fire department to begin with.
What's that?
It wasn't designed for a fire department to begin with.
No, for a grist mill. And so I say functionally obsolete, that, that was a very purposeful term, it means that it functions, but not how it would today if you were designing, so there are plenty of bridges that are functionally obsolete that you can still drive on, that you wouldn't design them like that today. Um, so that indicates that, yes, it's providing service, but we have to get the smallest trucks, um, which causes problems with moving things around, if a tank goes down, sorry, I'm getting into the details, but I'll just sit on that.
So can you repeat what you said again, does it start again?
Uh, yeah, the, the current Dexter City Fire Station is functionally obsolete for the demands of a modern fire and rescue station.
Okay, thank you.
I think we get out there more efficiently, but I don't think it's obsolete, I don't think we're delivering poor service.
Well, so the functionally obsolete is, you would never design a building with those living quarters today, it wasn't designed for that, it was designed for a completely volunteer service.
If I'm going out to the community, I want to be real solid and I want to be naked and I want them to see it as positive and not, there's a war on and we gotta vote yes or no. So that's how it strikes me, it's like, well, well, wait a minute, we don't have bad service. Uh, maybe address that the sleeping quarters are inadequate.
Yeah, I would say forcing.
Maybe go right to what the problems are, I don't know.
Yeah, forcing the firefighters to use extension cords and space heaters. In 2020, for me, that screams functionally obsolete. Derek?
Is there institutional memory about how, who or where this request originally came from? Was it, was it a city council member who brought, I mean, I, this is a long, it's a long timeline. I don't know if there's two minutes we can take to recoverings to figure out, was this a request that originally came from?
Oh, from the fire hall or for what?
For the fire hall specifically, do, I don't, where, who was the first one who brought up the, hey, we need to stop that? Then was there a requesting?
Ninety, I think it was in ninety-eight, ninety-seven, that we were talking about at the fire. We were on for new city offices, because that's where the city offices were, worked for that, we're on for a better solution, there was some more traffic coming in, yes, things that was came on, it got worse and worse. And so I think that's how it started to grow, that we got it in the mid twenties and we've had it since that time, so we haven't really made a lot of progress there in my opinion, but I always hope so, but it seems to me that that's, that's the timing, timing that would happen there. And why it started in that, in that fashion. But the fact is that there's no, that fire station didn't handle all the things that we felt, it died for the city for the rest of the DAFD, and the DAFD, you know, now they have two new fire stations, while we were sitting around with nothing, they were sitting off, sitting with nothing, but not a lot. Uh, they, they went ahead and said, okay, well, we're starting that. They're wrong, we got Dexter and Dexter Township to do that, so, they took the board by the wants to do that.
Well, we always had, we'd have a conversation about station one, station two. That kind of was out there from the beginning, I think, when we were trying to, to sound the idea of area wise. And I could be wrong about that too, I always could be wrong, but that's sort of somewhere, somewhere stuck in, in my head.
So, so can I try to expand on what Zach said? Zach started us off with a sentence that's, I think it's pretty good.
Yeah.
Current Dexter City, the current Dexter City Fire Station is functionally obsolete for the demands of a modern fire and rescue station, like is that correct? Try to have that. So I'd like to propose we add an open statement, an objective statement. While the service delivered out of that station is still excellent, oh, you could pick the word, services are very good, the town's excellent, the current building needs significant, very significant renovation, or we need a new station.
So you missed out what you said?
While the current building needs significant renovation, or we need.
Oh, we're trying.
Right?
Yeah.
And those are essentially the two options, if there were two.
I would want to add to that too, just something about how, you know, it's needed for the health and safety of our firefighters. Because, you know, I think it's important to say like, the service is excellent, but we need this because they, you know, we need to do better for them. Or something, yeah, I think that's a fair point, that there's a side of, the station is serving to, you know, at least to businesses, I guess.
So, so while the service delivered out of the station is still excellent, the current building itself needs either significant renovations, or we need a new station.
Upgrades, to upgrade conditions.
To upgrade conditions for the, our firefighters.
Yeah.
For the health and safety of our firefighters.
Yeah, to ensure the health and safety.
Yeah, sure.
To ensure the health and safety.
Yeah, I think I just read two articles the last week and a half about all the issues, we're almost in our news. Excuse me, that made it, uh, talk about fire stations and their need for people that have issues with, with all kinds of cancers, because of so many new materials and stuff that when a fire comes in, it burns up, causes different things that cause a lot more. Cancer rate was, I think, like thirty-nine percent higher.
Well, it's, it's higher for sure.
Yeah, some of the ways for, new materials. And, uh, and target is to be to come in and immediately have, you know, ways to wash firefighters, take care of them and take care of equipment to wash all of that as well. So the question is, do you start with that and say, yeah, well, we, we need a new fire station because we also have a public safety thing? Uh, and, uh, and the future, or do you just say, we need it because we need another truck? I just think it's, uh, I guess I always will put my, personally put my dollars behind the safety of the firefighters, which is possible.
I think, uh, we can look back to our guiding principles and it seems like, I'm not saying this to tell you what's stated in the elevator to residents, but if we are looking to write something up, I in the past, I suggested it would be great to have something that's sort of in premise conclusion format, more like a logical statement so you can follow, you know, you know, because of this, because of this, because of this, therefore this, kind of a thing, and it actually seems to flow pretty nicely, our first, second, and third guiding principles, which are on the one of the packets. And again, this is not the proposed final wording, but you could weave those first three principles into this statement basically to say, almost like a inner resolution, I guess, as past resolution says, we believe that providing a solid foundation for fire and emergency prevention, service and responsibility is important. We believe the health, safety and welfare of our community, including our firefighters is important, further we.
The format, traditional format.
Right, we believe that regulations, requirements and designs have practices for fire stations, that fire rescue services have changed since the fire station was constructed in the nineteen fifty's, you know, given that, um, I lost track, you know, where my favorite's here, this one. You know, while the service, you know, delivered out of station, so whatever this, this current building needs, whatever, so I think, you know, the fact that law suggests that we tie in, you know, health, safety of our firefighters, that makes sense and it's consistent with our second guiding principle, which says health, safety, welfare of our community, including our firefighters, so I think to the extent that we can be referring back to our guiding principles and making sure that, I think it would be really nice if we, if there was a sort of logically consistent flow between at least some of our guiding principles, which then segues into the objective, whatever you want to call it. So I think, seems like we're headed in a good path, because I can at least envision some version that ties in at least the, the three, the first three guiding principles.
But do we need to repeat those in the, in the statement that we're back in? I was thinking that we were building off those and those stood alone, I mean, I, I, I like taking some words from them.
Right, I just, I guess I'm thinking, I'm imagining, there might be a time when there's a resolution down the road, for example, uh, you know, as, we're like trying to get behind stuff with those actions. So I think keeping them in mind, any who can imagine how the words, yeah, I don't think it needs to be part of the statement necessarily, um.
I would think if we did a resolution, we would, we would put the guiding principles in the resolution as the entry part of it, and then reform, so therefore.
Yeah, just, yeah, as much as possible as you can make things like flow logically, you know, so it follows, it's basically like a topic sentence and the rest of your paragraphs and the, you know, including the statement kind of, and like just a structural idea, so.
Yep. I'm gonna read what we have so far, just to be refreshed. The current Dexter City Fire Station is functionally obsolete for the demands of a modern fire and rescue station. While the service delivered out of the station is still excellent, the current building needs significant renovation, or we need a new, or we need a new station for the health and safety of our firefighters. I feel like it needs something like M, M two, to be providing that, that service or something like that, but. I think it's pretty, I mean, it's very succinct, but it, it, I mean, what we're aiming at is an elevator speech, it's something that's easily remembered.
We did one more time with these last.
The current Dexter City Fire Station is functionally obsolete for the demands of a modern fire and rescue station. While the, while the service delivered out of the station is still excellent, the current building needs significant renovations, or we need a new station for the health and safety of our firefighters.
Yes, they.
I don't think you need a safety, that's, that, that leaves you at a point of impact as well.
I mean, you could say for the health and safety of our residents and firefighters, if you want, but.
And, yeah, yeah, and the other thing, I mean, if you wanted to add what you were saying, you know, the first time you read it, you could say something like, something about efficiency, improvement, efficiency of services, just because the service is excellent, but there are things that we would do in another scenario that would improve the efficiency of what our firefighters are able to do. I don't know if that's too much, but.
No, I like it.
I would personally be interested in some feedback from either the chief or DAFD about any claim we make about the services coming out of that station. I don't feel qualified as an individual member of this council with the information I've seen to make a claim about the quality of services, and I don't know that that's necessarily part of our duty as councils to evaluate the quality of services coming out of the station, maybe it is, maybe it's the conversation we've had. And maybe somebody can point me to the information we've received to date that tells me what the quality of services are coming out of the station, because I cannot specifically point to anything that says right now whether it's excellent, very good, both for or, so maybe I just need to be pointed to the documents that have been shared with us to tell us that.
I used to be the same way, and I used to portray that, I didn't have somebody that I know come and have them when I'm in dire straits, well, guess what? Three times, fairly recently, within the last two years, I've met them and they were wonderful, they were unbelievably comforting, efficient, speedy, all those things, so I feel like they do deliver excellent service. And I didn't necessarily feel like I could, I would have known that had I not burned into a problem, I just said that to Paul, and he's going like this, like, those of us who've had to use them, we know what they're like. Um, so that, that helps, I mean, when you're trying to figure out what you're trying to say, they're good, there's no question.
Well, and, and one of the questions that I generally like to do as part of master plan surveys, at least for communities that run or contract on fire services, description of fire services, do you believe it's adequate, question two, have we had contact with them in the past five years and how would you describe that service? With various rankings there, now one metric that I'm not entirely well versed on is the ISO rating, but that's kind of a hodgepodge of response times and training and apparatus and those things, and my understanding was we're near about the highest we can get, I believe the Chelsea Air Fire Authority is one better than us, which I, I personally don't like that, but, um, we're, we're in a pretty good place, so that's another established national metric. Well, Jamie, I can, I can tell you that in seventeen years of being part of this council, and the last seven on the fireboard, I can only remember talking to one resident about a natural run, like where they. talking to one resident about a natural run, like where they filed a, a financial concern about what happened. This was several years back. It was more of a mistaken identity concern. Firefighter, that was a person, it was a guy, it was a lady. It was dark and it was night and short hair and she was upset about what she was called and otherwise, most, most people I'm very thankful for.
I don't care where you call me, just give me.
But we still have to, we still have to listen to the concern I have. Chief, please, yeah, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
No, I I truly appreciate the comment. Sorry to be around here, but that's a call. I I just want to comment and be very careful and be very careful when we talk about service provided. You know, the fire services has been a challenge for many, many years. We never fail in the fire service. The fires go out, the rescues get made. The trucks get out of the fire station, they get there in a hurry and gosh, the staff did a wonderful job and everybody loves it. And we go back and put everything back in service. That's been our downfall in our service for many, many years and every budget we have is that, it always falls back to, well, you're doing a great job now. Why do you need more money? You're doing a great job now. Why do you need a building? Doing a great job now. Why do you need another fire truck? And you end up falling into that trap with the citizens that don't understand that when we're making those runs, our guys may be cutting corners. They may be doing a great risk to the operation, to the department and to themselves. For instance, we come out of the, every run that we go out of right now, we face traffic issues. Every run that we go on now, in the middle of the night, guys come down steps in the fire station that are non-conforming and it's all a response now. People don't know that. Every run that we go on now, we come back to the station, we're, we have one guy there, maybe two. We back into a station that has a very, very narrow openings, very narrow garage doors. Yes, I've had damage to fire trucks. The public doesn't know that. The guys come back and they got to decontaminate the apparatus or or wash the equipment. We do, we have to do it out in the bay that that doesn't have adequate fuel separators. It doesn't have separation for deep chemicals or bloodborne pathogens. We clean it in the bay. That's a great risk to ourselves. The public doesn't know that. So, reality, we make it work. We're going to give you that service. And every one of my guys are going to put themselves at great risk to do what they need to do. I don't care if you give us a pole. That's what we're going to do. At this point, the station we have now is an attic. It provides document after document after document that talks about the needs of a modern fire station, if you will. I just, I I think that you go down the right track there, but I don't want to get trapped in the service. We're going to do service. We're going to continue to do it after I leave, just a few months. But that doesn't mean that everything's right. That doesn't mean that everything, we're doing everything according to my own standards or living up to ISO standards, as Zach brought up and I'll comment on that briefly. But just because we're giving that service doesn't mean that we're doing it the most efficient way we can. And we get on the fire now, we probably are, but what we're doing in the station is cutting a lot of clothes and and so we need a modern, more modern fire station to do that. I'll just touch real briefly because ISO is a huge thing, but right now Dexter is an ISO rating of five. The scale goes from one to ten. Five is pretty good for this type of fire department. Could you get to a four? Yeah, there's a couple of things, but they might be out of reach. The biggest thing that gets you there is full-time staffing. They look at that, probably a deficiency that we have here is not having an area or apparatus in the city itself. We're in our district. While we do have them around us, they don't give us the ISO points that could get us there. And I'm just, even if we brought an area, our grab's a number of other things that have to happen. It's, some of you sat through the program, I forgot, talked about ISO. It's, you know, one little change seems like it ought to get you one more point, but if it doesn't, it might be a hundredth of a point or a tenth of a point. And so it's a very, very complicated algorithm that does that. But do I believe Dexter can get to a four? Yeah. Will the fire station itself do it? Probably not. That's more operational stuff. That's more about the equipment you have, how many people you have, than the historical nature of how you respond to incidents, things of that nature. So I don't want anybody to think that automatically a new station is going to increase your ISO rating or improve it. It it's not necessarily going to do that. Some of the, it might help with some of the things that we could do internally. You know, can we do more fire inspections on buildings? Can we do more plant review? Are we operating in accordance with NFPA standards? And so certain elements inside the building that that we would be able to do more efficiently may gain us a little bit of credit, but just having a random building, I don't want anybody to be under that illusion that it's going to do it. So that's my spiel. I, you know, if if you say, you know, you're providing an excellent service, do you need a new building? That's like saying your forty-year-old car still starts and goes to the grocery store. Do you still need the car? Leave it to you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I think that was part two. So when I brought up this idea about service and it seemed like a lot of the responses were sort of from a customer service perspective or the person on the receiving end of the services, I guess, I think of, you know, this service is is more like, now how is the service perceived? But I mean, could they be responding faster? Could they be, you know, doing things, doing things better, not just, at the end of the day, you know, was this done? So I kind of, I appreciate Chief's comments because I think they were speaking a bit to sort of this other component of service that I had in my mind, which isn't just do the residents think that the firefighters are friendly when they interact with them or, you know, are they happy with how they were dealt with when they get on scene, but more what is happening on the side of the firefighters, I, you know, to Chief's point, you know, it's on to each, they're cutting corners and things like that, even just, you know, before they get to the, you know, customers or, if you will, on the other end. I also see that as part of service. I think it's a fair point that he's making that I think it can be tricky and potentially nuanced how you're defining that and yeah, I I think those are fair points to be raised. So I just wanted to clarify that community service means more than just, were you as a resident satisfied when somebody came to your house and dealt with you, you know, helped you?
We do have a resident that's joined us this evening, at least one that can see Ryan on the screen.
Oh, good.
And I didn't go there and start a reading because I didn't see him on the screen, but we do have non-arranged participation on the agenda. Is it okay if I ask a final question? Ryan, are you here to say a few words?
Can you hear me?
You're there now, sir. Yes, thanks for joining us.
Hi, no, thank you all for sitting down to do this work. I was mostly, I'm sorry, like I'm mostly here to observe the session and I know that, you know, we've lived here for goodness, I think this is the ninth year now. But the fire station has been an area of, an area of like consternation or concern for as long as we've been here. And we've heard a lot of the stories about the long-term push and pull of it. I I'm encouraged with taking a holistic approach at, at, and moving through it. And honestly, just hoping that you're able to get, to 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 get to a resolution that everybody feel pretty good about it. I think that the, you know, the, the things that the chief and you mentioned are all pretty straightforward. But I also do understand the concern about just like how much money it would cost to, to do these things. But but I think, oh, sorry, but I I do think that there is a lot to be gained from, from, from going through a process, from looking at all the different angles and ways to approach it. And I think that from most of the residents I've talked to, you know, there is a lot of, like, there's a lot of appreciation for our firefighters in the area. And so figuring out how we can do right by them while also like doing right by, doing right, right by like what, what kinds of property and availability we'll have, how difficult it will be to do those things. A tough needle to thread, but I have confidence that y'all will be able to pull it out. Thank you for not kicking the can down the road even further and I really appreciate you all like working on it, working on it as best you can.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate your comment.
That's the best controlless I ever saw.
Josh, that's one there, right? The other two are you and Nars. Thanks, Ryan. Michelle is also just being ordered to, oh, she, oh, she is? Yeah, okay, great.
Michelle.
Michelle.
How did we get that, Michelle? I don't see any evidence.
I see her now. I checked. I thought that was her name, but I couldn't make it out at all. That's why I asked. And then she, she did have a question. I think if Josh can bring one, would you hear?
Do you want me to say the question that I had, Justin?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, so I'm so sorry that I wasn't here for the beginning of your meeting. The Brownfield Authority meeting for the city of Northville that I've been recently appointed ran later than we had anticipated. So please accept my apologies. But what I did hear was, was very positive and very constructive and productive. There was one thing that I wondered as I, as I was listening and it was this. Are there any legal ramifications that need to be considered if you include language that would indicate that the firefighter's health, safety or welfare is compromised by the current building?
That's a question for.
Yeah, probably questions for the city attorney. Well, I have no trouble saying that it's not a good place for people to work in. So if there are ramifications or not, I'd rather be straightforward and I'm, I'm pretty with that.
We may want to convey a message or remind you to be careful about urban reviews. And that may be a good reason to get Scott to take a look at what we proposed and.
Yeah, well, this is where the delicate balance of a lot of what we're talking about comes in.
Exactly. It's hard.
You know, obviously the building was built to a good society standard, which is acknowledged in our guiding principles or modern codes and things that are in effect. You know, that being said, the station is largely not worth the same.
Well, how we got where we are, it was so sturdy, it was built, you know, it's got some structure. I would say, you know, they don't even build like that anymore. So that is part of the problem and the problem. We've always had, always got a floor that'll last forever, that kind of thing.
I like, I like the two sentences that we've put together. I'd like to get those picked up in front of everybody who can see them. I think that's an excellent start. What, so now I'm, Jamie and you both had ideas on, what's next? Once we get the problem statement or, I'm sorry, opportunity objective, is that what we're calling it? Something, double O? Once we get that down, what is next in our process, just in terms of what you're thinking? Not sure we're necessarily tackled, but I just wanted to add to, what do you, I always want to look at it.
Yeah, so my thought originally was that then we get into the details at the NITI radio office, you know, the discussion. So whether we do it based on different categories or however we want to divide the discussion or just let it flow, I put some thoughts in that document, in the scope session, but it was more just getting at the thoughts that I had versus, you know, the definite path, but getting into that detail, the conversation to get us to answer that why is station, basically? Why are we doing this?
Okay, so on page like three, Jamie, I'll just add this for a second, but at page three, you're suggesting that we start talking about needs categories then, right? Is that what I'm saying under scope?
Yes, and these categories, I put those as examples, not necessarily the categories.
Sure.
As as the council, we can define those categories, but basically have a conversation about the details of. Which then I think Jamie's document some of what she has shared to me, falls within those different categories of conversation.
That sound like a good topic for the next agenda or the next work study? And I'm assuming a lot of people doing this, right? Building on that?
The, sorry, the other approach we can have is if we feel that it's better to talk about current versus potential new stations to maybe talk about the, you know, the next step would be talk about the current station. And it seems that the, there's a lot of our talk tonight that what, it went to the details, it was about the current station. So maybe we should just talk a lot about the current station instead.
Yeah, thanks. So yeah, looking back into my, just that page, just that page four. So, so where I said defining the problem, just as a reminder to myself, I had said that the statement would be presented in such a way as to accurately and specifically reflect the issue at hand and be easily understandable by all stakeholders, including the public. So that's something I'll be thinking about as we review or whatever iteration of the statement we see next. I also have a stakeholder engagement, that's something that was in some of us outlawed too, and that's important to everybody. I would be open to at this point, and actually I did as an individual council member, reach out to members of the DAFD and I said, hey, we're needing to talk about this problem statement. I, you know, I'm curious to know if they had anything to add and I mentioned that part of interlocal agreement. You know, what do they see as the deficiency that they do want fully mainstreamed, if any? And to what extent at all, if at all, do those deficiencies, if any, impact the ability of the city to meet the terms of the interlocal agreement whereby this station needs to be the center of control operations? That's an ask I mean personally as an individual council member and I made sure to clarify that in my email that I was not speaking on behalf of council. My understanding is that DAFD needs this Thursday. I would rather in ask what that come from all of council. I don't know the extent to which other people here are interested in any input DAFD would provide when it comes to the ability of the station to meet the terms of the interlocal agreement. And I think they're in position to evaluate that. So as we consider moving forward with the problem statement, or I guess at any, any stage, I want DAFD to know that at least I personally am interested in their feedback, if, and to the entire council. I think that's worth discussing and worth formally making an ask as a body. And then in terms of, you know, moving beyond that, I like the approach of reviewing, you know, the current statement, any documents we have about the current statement, which I would say off the top of my head includes 2015 partners in architecture evaluation, which a lot of it is what I copied and pasted, you know, further below to say, these are the ways in which it is functionally obsolete. And there were several places where recommendations were made, you know, when, when you get to whatever you're doing, address X, Y and Z. So there are, there's specific guidance about what to address as it relates to the infrastructure and also as it relates to how services provided out of that station. So I, I would define the next step in that, where it's either reviewing the problem statement to finalize it and then looking at whatever information we have in front of us that's talking about the conversation and further fleshing out the manner in which it is functionally obsolete.
Agreeable there, but for the next, okay.
Keep going forward.
And does anybody have thoughts about formally reaching out to DAFD? I don't know how that would need to be done or whether people are interested in hearing from DAFD or not, relative to just because that hits to their, you know, the personal decision making or or decision making is not. I mean, I think I've said all along that I do want to hear from a variety of sources who have, you know, more professional knowledge of this situation, because I have no professional knowledge for this situation. So I'm definitely in favor of hearing from GAFD.
So, you know, you have to understand that GAFD is a board of, um, like us. So, you know, you have to understand that GFD is a board of, kind of like us. It's not made up of fire department professionals.
Fair enough, but it's made up of people who have more knowledge than I do. But I also would like, you know, I mean, as I've said before too, I would like to hear from a variety of sources. So DFD is maybe not the only resource that I'd like to hear from.
Well, Zach may help me remember, but this past year or sometime, I don't know if it was July or August, I tried to ask. The board thought at that time there wasn't much response from those of the other groups, would you agree? Yeah, they're, they're oversight policy, not professional firefighters. The chief and the firefighters are usually the most able to provide insight. They certainly have access to the chief. And for those of you interested, the fire, or the station design conference in Chicago is May twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth of this year. I do plan on going again. What were those dates again? May twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth.
So is it safe to say if there was some serious deficiency in terms of the operations of the DAFD, that would be something that the DAFD board would be aware of? Or not? Would that never rise to the occasion of being something that DAFD is aware of? No, it wouldn't even make sense. I think for me, the value in DAFD is that there are people on that board from other municipalities, right? So other, other members who are, have stations in the DAFD, right? So if we're talking about the interlocal agreement, that's just a conversation, I think, I mean, I wish we could have had that conversation previous to now. So I don't, but that doesn't mean I don't think it's valuable to have. If, if we can get them to provide feedback. So I mean, I'm, Jamie, I'm grateful that you reached out to them. I'm just curious to see what they say. I definitely want to hear, hear from them.
Chief, yeah, perhaps it would help. I don't think I've ever had the opportunity to sit down with the entire board where our whole meeting is just focused on the fire station. And perhaps it would help to have a two or three hour session like you're doing with your team, planning and goals. Where we just start at the top and say, we want a fire station. What do we need to put in it? And then I can guide you through that we need an S-one storage area for fire trucks, okay? We could talk that, that whole thing through and what it takes to support fire trucks, what it takes to get in and out. You know, what are the amenities that need to be in that area? What do we need for offices? Okay, why do we need certain offices? How many? What functions do we need to do it? We can put it up on a board and just start writing this stuff down. And then talk about, okay, we got offices. What does it take to support an admin in a fire department? Now you got IT stuff and things like that. So you need an IT room, you need a library, you need some storage areas. If we could talk through every one of those rooms and training, what do we need for training? Need classroom, right? If you place the store chairs, tables, audio visual, whatever, a storage space for that. Can that be combined with another storage space? Maybe, maybe not, but we could talk through that. And I think by the time we were done with that, in, in the next big area, it would obviously be residential or quarters for firefighters. What does it take for that? Punk rooms, locker rooms, kitchens, laundry, things, things like that. And we could actually list each of those on a piece of paper. And I think, and then start attaching some square footage necessary for those functions. And I mean, that's how we approach fire station design. Like what do you need there? And we go room by room, and we let the architects decide what they can combine and can't combine. Right? Let them come back with a picture for us. You know, some of this is codeable. For instance, the S-one storage where the fire trucks are. It's completely separated from anything else. It can't be a part of that. The residential area or the fire, fire accommodations can't be part of admin and it can't be part of the administrative or the S-one storage. So you end up getting these code things that force some splits or force some things to happen. And I would be wanting to win at some point, just to spend that two or three hour and work started, talk and walk through them. We want a fire station. Here's what we need to do out of it. And then what are all the rooms and the functions that we need to be able to do? And I think by the time when we're done with that, you'll, you'll help design, you'll help put it together. Providing us with articulate why we need these different areas, but I'll be glad to do that pretty quick. Just let me know.
Okay, so we'll have Justin. Everyone will continue to workshop then. Next, a conclusion today, February twenty-eighth. I'll send you a draft statement. If the sound is best I can, Jamie.
I also.
You got it down, okay? See the first draft of that and we'll continue talking about needs. Chief, if you could be here, we'll continue on. Let's take a couple of minutes because everybody's stretched their lights. And I've got three minutes to seven and then we'll start right off.